Yes, you are.
Should be good to go. We'll call the meeting board and start with the pledge.
I pledge the resolution certified by the United States of America in two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming on, everybody. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Got a couple corrections. Consent agenda to see the resolution certified delinquent claims to the county auditor. There's a revised resolution in front of you that has some additions there. I want to remove the minutes. Till the next time, I've got a couple changes and corrections here that we can make and get back on the agenda for next time. So we'll remove the minutes. Need to add F2, park board update. And I'd like to add, I guess we're just part of the mayor's report. Like to talk about developers mowing their undeveloped lots. And then flags on city poles, the city utility poles. So I'd like to bring that up. There's a couple issues I think we need to address. Tim can work on. So that's what I've got. Tim, anything else?
We have one addition there would be credit cards. City state and credit cards. And I think maybe I'll just throw that under as like a two under my report.
Okay. No, anything? Nope. Dwayne?
Nope.
Ronnie?
Nope.
Yeah?
Nope.
Okay. I'll approve a, I'll entertain a motion for approve the agenda.
I'll take that.
Thanks, Wayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. The little Rusty, I think gone for Miss Black. Under the consent agenda, as amended there, we removed the minutes and revised the delinquent claims. Any other questions for the administrator on the consent agenda?
Yes. Pay request for 16th Street.
Sure.
Is that the final pay request?
Not to my knowledge, no. We're, we're, we're holding that final pay basically because they have a punch list they're already working on.
Yep.
And as soon as we make that, they make that final pay request, then we have a one-year warranty on that street. I know it sparked my attention that we're having some issues out there.
Yep.
And I know I talked with Dwayne about that a little bit and the mayor, they were there the other day. So we have pictures of that. I know our, our city engineer is on vacation this week, but obviously that's going to be an issue we follow up on. So we'll definitely be holding that retainage until that final payment, until we're satisfied with it.
I just wanted to be sure.
Nope. You gotcha.
Okay. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Things stand, do I have a second?
Well, second.
Things, Ronnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. I don't have any cards, no visitors. Mayor's report, a couple of things added there. One, developers who have developments that are half done or partially done and the lots are supposed to be mowed several times a summer. I know I just got another call yesterday, this morning for two more that are up, I guess in my neighborhood, that the grass is up over your head. So I don't know how we can have the guys when they're out, if they see some, or we need to get...
Well, I have been trying to do drive arounds when I have time. And I know that, you know, sending letters is kind of the last thing I want to do because obviously that means extra time. So I have communicated, and I mean, you brought up those two on the northwest side of town. And they were taken care of. In my own neighborhood, there's a number of vacant lots that, that I've been dealing with, especially. And Mr. Vigil has been pretty good about that. He's gotten this guy out as soon as we call him. I mean, obviously, they're waiting until we call. I mean, they're gonna, they're not gonna mow it until somebody says something.
Right.
So what I can tell you, and I told this to everyone who's asked me about it, if you have a lot that you see this long, give me a call. Because until, until I know about it, and I mean, I, I remind Charlie too, when he does his drive around, if you see anything that looks out of line, I mean, we've been sending out about two letters a day on average for weeds or garbage or, you know, it's, it's, it's more steady than I would anticipate. You drive around town, I think it looks good.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, when you get into different neighborhoods, there's that one where, and to be honest, people are at home more. So I think they're maybe getting a little bit more, maybe a little bit more nitpicky than they would be in a normal year too. I mean, some of them I've gone out to and I visit and I said, well, this isn't really what I would consider to be excessive. But we still end up signing letters for most of them, so. But let me know if you see something, please, because that's, that's the only time I can react to it.
And the next thing was, uh, flags on city poles. And we had one situation where it was brought to my attention, so I kicked it to Tim and he contacted the homeowner and they said, sure, we'll take it down. End of the week, they did take it down. Well, now they put it back up because they said, basically, the ordinance doesn't cover flags. And other people have flags on poles. So I guess as a council, we'd have to discuss that. If it's a city pole, it's city property, there shouldn't be any flags of any kind on poles and that we should be consistent. And that we should ask everybody to take them down if they have them. And then if they put them back up, I don't know what we can do with that, but...
Well, I mean, what I've told people, and I mean, in accordance with our ordinance, you know, it is a city, city property. And I'm glad you brought it up. I mean, I've talked, I know you mentioned it too. In this case, it's one of a political flag. However, there are a number of folks who've had US flags or flags of other natures on poles. And so what I've tried to do is I try to contact them in person. You know, in this case, the fellow did take it down and then he said, well, but these folks have got American flags on poles too. So one of them is down, owned by CHS. There's, and I can't, that flag had to have been up for 10 years. Because when I went out there, I mean, you could see the flag holder is beat and it, and the flag was pretty old too. The consistency is the key.
Right.
People often are saying, you know, if we're saying that we have to take it down for one type, it has to be for all of them. And that's, I think, the way it should be.
Right.
You know, we don't typically like, somebody puts up a garage sale sign or a lost dog sign or something like that. I'm not as worried about that because it's just going to be two or three days coming down those are papered. What we're gonna do is, you know, we're gonna verbally warn people, which is always better because if you could talk to them in person, usually they understand why. If they don't do it, they're gonna get a letter and after a period of time, if they don't take it down, staff is gonna take it down. We're gonna take the signs down, signs or flags or whatever they are. We're gonna take them here to city hall and if somebody wants to call and, just so you're on board with that. Because we may be, we may get some pushback. Hey, I've got this nice US flag up and why'd you take it down? I've had it for 10 years. Well, because we don't want there to be any inconsistencies.
I mean, that's kind of how the right of way for signs, would that call?
Yeah, it is in the right of way. All those are in the right of way. That's right. Yep.
So it's no different than the discussion we had last time about the electrical boxes and things being around those? If it's in the right of way, it should be there.
Right.
Particularly if it's gonna, if it's gonna impede potentially electric service getting to something on that pole, it should be there.
Yeah.
Right.
I think you have direction from the council that we're all in board with.
Yep. Well, no, I appreciate that. And I know I'll be talking to Josh about that too.
Do you have, like I said, reworded into the ordinance, so for...
No, I think it's, I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's just a matter of enforcement, you know. And in some cases, some people have never had a complaint and they may not even realize. And now we're just gonna have to say, hey, here's the deal. You may have had your flag up for 10 years, but you really can't.
Yeah.
And I'm hoping that maybe after the elections this fall, people will, you know, relax a little bit too, you know, and calm down about these things. And maybe that'll, that'll be a solution as well. But we know that it's gonna be a hot fall for that. So better to just nip it in the bud right now.
It might also not be a bad idea to put in the next city newsletter a reminder about how far back signs are.
Yep. No, and that's already scheduled to be in the newsletter as a reminder about political, but every other kind of sign will be in the newsletter. So no, and we're gonna have the city website too, just reminding people.
Next in their mayor's, mayor's report, just something that was in front of you all that we'll get in next time's packet is the, just a quick evaluation that Dwayne and I did with Tim. His six-month probationary period was coming up or is up. So we met with him on Monday and just jotted a few things down there. So it's kind of an informal but formal that we're recommending that he is no longer a probationary city administrator. That he becomes the actual city administrator, so.
I don't know. Can we maybe squirm a little bit?
We got a little next week.
Yeah, I was not there on Monday. I was squirming.
I think he's doing a great job.
Yeah. Left there. We'll get it next time's packet, but we'll, that recommendation is there, so.
Yeah, I've scanned it in the reading, so yeah, we'll have it in.
Okay. Thank you. And at 2:00 today, the governor came out and had a mask mandate that's gonna start on Saturday. I've already had three phone calls and two emails about what the city is gonna do about enforcing the mask mandate. So my opinion is mayor, not to influence anybody else, but the city really has nothing to do other than on our city property and with our city employees. We have our policies for our buildings and city property and public places. But it's up to everybody to self-police that. And like I said, today, businesses really, you know, you can tell people, hey, you should have your mask on. And if there's a big scene, you've done what you can do. And that's really all you can do. But I don't think that the city's gonna jump in and be the mask police, so my opinion. I mean, the department is busy with folks stealing our cars out of our driveways and dridges. We don't need to have their time doing that. I think for the most part, there'll be a lot more compliance voluntarily now that it's a supposed mandate. But there'll always be some that are gonna just absolutely use the toilet. And the biggest thing is don't cause a scene. Let's not have castings be on the news because somebody threw a fit at Trader Joe's and became the internet star, so.
Well, and I mean, I did, you know, the, the chamber had a meeting today and, you know, if a business person does feel uncomfortable with the situation, you know, our police are there so that, you know, if there is a problem, you know, it is what it is.
Right.
Whether people really agree with it or not. If a business person says, hey, you gotta wear a mask or you can't be in here, then you either gotta put a mask on or you gotta leave. You know, and you don't have to like it. And I did send out that guidance to you this afternoon as well that when we received it, we will be taking additional steps here at city hall and, and for our employees, whether they like it or not, to make sure that we're leaving the way and showing, you know, that it has to be done properly. So we're gonna be doing additional screening and things like that, so, you know. Businesses should feel comfortable that they do have to, you know, we want to avoid an issue where it's a law enforcement action happens, so.
Right, absolutely. And if they get called, obviously you don't respond, you do, you do your job. But I just want to avoid, you know, the one person that called and he said that they were gonna go around and anybody who didn't have masks on, they were gonna call the police every time they saw somebody without a mask. I just want to avoid that because that's just a waste of our...
Yeah, I don't think that's the intention.
That's not the intention of it. You don't want to call to the non-emergency number every time this self-appointed sheriff sees an infraction, so. It's a lot of, it'd be a lot, so. That's happening as of Saturday. Public forum, we don't have anything. Public hearing, water maintenance, vacation, planes 11 canceled. Community report, EDA report.
I thought this was interesting to include. I wanted you to see it. The EDA does a lot of good work and they're, they're working through some different programming issues and things like that. But I thought this was fascinating for you just to see in terms of what the, what they're kind of working on right now. These are the, sort of the priorities that right now the EDA has kind of identified after doing some, you know, goal setting. And one area that we're, we're, we're looking specifically at is trying to promote that cast and feel identity and then also housing. Trying to identify how the EDA could play a role in family, multifamily housing, if that's just something that they want to take, you know, take a look at. The other thing that I included in there because I thought was interesting is this is a business listing of all the businesses that are in our area.
But not all of them are listed.
And not all of them are listed, right. This is the list that the secretary of state's office has for our, for our cast and registration. So, you know, you know, we often think, well, we don't have this, we don't have that. But I think when you look through that, it's fascinating to see how many businesses there really are that are registered here and what they do, you know. So that's just included as information. You know, it's something that the, the EDA is kind of chewing on, saying, okay, where the leakage is in our community. Where we say, hey, you know, people are not able to get that service here, they have to go to Rochester. Because that's where we really feel like, you know, we can excel at trying to get that kind of business here. Because, you know, automotive, for example, like car dealership, you know, we don't really have a major car dealership. Obviously, that means that somebody's gonna go to Rochester. You know, those are areas where we might look, in the future, look to try and recruit somebody here to do something like that because we know there's a good market here. So this was just interesting. I thought, you know, look at it as you see fit and, you know, it's fascinating to see what kind of business actually exists. The other thing they're looking at doing is kind of what I call grow it, grow it at home or grow it yourself. Trying to help businesses there, for example, in someone's garage, move to the next step, which is, you know, maybe, you know, you have a dog grooming business or something like that. You want to move into a, a space. We have some buildings on Main Street that have, are not occupied right now. I know with the building right up here, just, the signs just changed, you know, so there is a dog groomer, gonna be moving in kind of right up here off of, like, down from city hall here. So that's kind of one of the efforts I think the EDA is gonna be doing as well, so just wanted to update you on that.
Perfect. Thank you. Park board update. Dan?
Just a quick one. We want to thank Jason Farnsworth for his service on the park board. He has turned in his resignation. And with that, there is now an opening on park board, so if there's anybody, and knows anybody that's interested, or there's anybody out there interested, we have an opening on park board.
City website.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Whole business, natural gas franchise fee.
I want to thank Nancy for her help on this. So this is a follow-up from our conversation that we had earlier this summer, I think. She's included some information and this is mostly from CenterPoint. So we, you know, I did talk to the, our own local representative from, you know, from the energy. But theirs would be somewhat similar in terms of what they see. There's a variety of different options, basically. As you can see in the packet, there are, you know, many cities in Minnesota utilize these franchise fees for different things. And they oftentimes have different utilization and different ways to do it. Typically residential has one rate, commercial has a different. When I spoke with our own local natural gas utility, their recommendation was to institute one flat fee across every account and then a price per therm. And they said that was, what they've seen as the best way to, you know, maintain a certain level of income. You know, so for example, if we did $5 in account or something like that, and then you would, you would, your, whatever else you would have would be collected by therms. So if I use 1,000 therms or whatever per month, it would be a certain amount per therm, like a penny per therm or something like that. And that way, your, your larger customers are the ones who are paying more. It's gonna slate up. So that was their recommendation, but you can see how a lot of different communities have done it. So I really appreciate Nancy for, for giving that information. I think right now, you know, speaking with our own representatives, they said it's not gonna be a difficult process if we do decide to pursue this. In essence, it's, we, you know, we passed a resolution setting that franchise fee, we forward that on to them. And then they instituted at that level, they're billing, through their billing process, so.
Okay. Any action you want on that tonight?
Well, I mean, I don't need any action. I, I do think it, you know, if the council decides the, the direction they want to go. You know, we have spoken about, we'd like to sort of segment these revenues off for potential facility upgrades. You know, we, I feel like it's important to be able to, to show what we're gonna do with this money. It shouldn't be something we just put it in their own fund. And in that way, we can also say, you know, this is the reasoning behind it, is that it's gonna allow for us not to have to raise taxes. Because we know that the private taxpayers are certainly very conscious of that. No, I don't need the action, but I, I do think, you know, going forward, if there's feedback, if you have a particular methodology you'd like to see used, we could certainly set that up. As you, as like I said, you can see in there, there is just a number of, number of different varieties of different ways to do this, so.
So if we did a per therm charge, how many therms can we use in the city of Catlin? Did they provide that?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. I don't have that information. But we can certainly do some research on how that would work. I think the way it would work is that they, you know, we're gonna set up, I think if you go to page 76, for example, in your, in your, your packet, you can see an example of what St. Paul has. And I think maybe that's, you know, included there because it's pretty straightforward. You can see that they have two different fees there. If you start at the top of the page, it says residential made through October. You know, they have a certain price per therm. And then different, they have broken up into small, commercial, large, commercial, small, commercial demand bill, all those different things that we do that you can see it yourself. And, you know, in essence, we would just have to set those fees. And in reality, what I would do is I would probably talk to the natural gas utility and I would ask them to advise us on what seems true. Because I don't really know, you know, how they came to four cents and .67 for residential per therm from November and October. I, you know, that isn't something I really know. I'm more familiar with a little bit more straightforward, which is either using a flat fee or just a total percentage of your aggregate sales. So, but, you know, it is up to the council.
Okay. Any other questions for someone?
Well, I know you had asked how many therms for the city. Would they be able to tell you the average household?
Sure. I'm sure they could tell us an average household. Yeah, exactly. I mean, it will vary because each household...
It's sure it's gonna vary, but I mean...
Quite different, but, I mean, they could give us a number on that, I'm sure. Yep.
Maybe we can just kind of, that might help. And you'll know, the city averages and the household average, and you'll know how much is potentially commercial and then industrial.
Yeah. I can certainly ask for more information. It's possible they may be able to have our representative come to our meetings, even. That might be helpful, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks for the comments.
Appreciate it.
New business, school resource officer agreement.
I don't know. Josh, if you wanted to maybe just discuss this real quick. I know Josh was working hard on this right when he got started. You know, our, our agreement was up for renewal and I think you had some conversations with our, with our school superintendent's office or whatnot. And had kind of come up with this as an agreement there, Josh. Go ahead.
Similar language to what we got before. There's something, maybe for changes. So I sat down with Mr. Matuska. We have a lot of similar expectations with that sort of position. And I'm gonna try and encourage all of our officers to spend time up there, especially at events and walking through that stuff.
Just on a personal note, Jeffy does a really excellent job. He knows the name of just about every student in all three schools. He says hi to them individually every day when they show up, which impresses me because I can't remember half of the names that he's in the class as I show up. But he literally knows every kid.
He's a great resource for us too, to find him if you don't know half of them. All right. Thanks, Josh. Any questions for chief on that? Okay. Entertained a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Mel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries. Thanks again. Fire relief bylaws is kind of a first read and questions for the fire chief here. But the Relief Association's been going through the bylaws for four years since I've been mayor, three and a half years. And we, they finally got some traction where we got something to look at here. But the big issue that's in there, the, the major change, and I'll let Joe address it, but it's with years of service and people that separated service and came back for the pension accrual. So that was the big motivation behind getting it done. So anything you want to add on that?
Yeah. No, I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, the, 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 I mean, there's no request for pay increases. There are no, none of that. The vesting period is all still the same. The percentages are all still the same. They've got to hit 10 years before they're vested. 20 years is fully vested. So it's, yeah, I mean, other than, other than that, that return to service language is, is the big change, so. And it's not a abnormality for, for bylaws to have return to service language in there, so.
So any questions for fire chief on that?
No.
I had questions, but they were addressed earlier.
Okay. So the fire department's gonna have to vote on this to ratify it and they'll bring it back to us for approval after they get on that. So do you have any questions in the meantime? Chief, administrator's report?
Sure. Got a number of items in there. One of them I want to stress is this energy assistance programming. You know, if, if folks are asking you, you know, especially during these times when we have so many issues, we have programs in place to help people pay their bills. But the issue that we run into is that people just do not sign up for it. And so, you know, even with some, you can read the, the write-up there, but frankly, you know, anytime anyone calls, Caston's capable of getting them, you know, information to help them get registered, whether it's through some CAC or through other programming. So we want to make sure people are applying for that if they do have problems. We, you know, there's money there. We want them to, I mean, we want the bills to be paid for, for our side. But we also want them to get the help they need, especially as we get towards the winter season, which will be even more impactful with the cold thing with that. Updated you a little bit on that EDA already, items there. We will be, I did attend the CNPS meeting last week. We also are having a special meeting Caston's gonna be hosting on Friday. Up at the, up at the forum room at the high school, we have a special meeting. There may be some changes coming there, out of their organization. But there, they've been great to work with us and partner with us on electrical items. They're calculating right now a 7% to 10% drop in usage for electricity for this COVID period from, since March. And they said that part of it is it's interesting that the weather's been kind of masking it to a certain extent. So they figured in, you know, obviously we're having a hotter summer this year than many years and more consistently hot. So the numbers actually look pretty good right now. They said if you took away that underlying weather, that overlying weather condition, you'd actually be seeing 7% to 10%. So in the long run, I think our electric utility is running quite well and we're gonna continue to work with Jared and making sure we're finding some of those things. But we wanted to update you there. And then parking rec, you know, we had a great meeting last night and the park supervisor updated us thoroughly on the aquatic center. Had some really positive comments that he shared. I know that, you know, the mayor had sent me an email and thanks for, thanks for that. We had a great email from someone who, the first time their child's ever gone to aquatic center really or gone down a slide, they just had a, a great experience. And later in the package, you'll also see, we included the food and beverage inspector report and the overall pool inspection report, which came back with zero violations. And so we're very proud of the work that our staff there is doing and they're doing a good job and, and pleased about that.
And on, on that note too, they did say last night that the inspector was at four other pools earlier that day. And when he came to ours, he was totally impressed by how we handled the COVID and the way it was staffed and everything. He was, he was really, that was his words, so that was good to hear.
The other item out of that would have been the, the update on the wall project. And Ronnie has got some, beginning some revised numbers to the park board for their meeting in August, which we then expect to have possibly a recommendation coming from the park board either in late August or September as part of our budget process. We'll have to be looking at that for, for next year, so. Another special session, which I'm sure you're all aware of, you know, the, the governor had called that back in place. It actually ended on Monday. And they did approve the, the police legislation. And I'm not sure how much impact that'll have on our own department. Unfortunately, one item I was hoping for, which was funding for cameras, was not included in that. But I know that they are, they are changing a lot of the training restrictions and regulations in terms of no more warrior training. A lot of different things will be eliminated as part of that, but, and then planning and zoning you got there. The other thing would be the, our natural, our code's gonna be changing. And so they're getting close to that. So right now, I think we're looking at September for, probably for approval of the council, which will give us plenty of time to get that out to stakeholders, the community developers and homeowners and things like that, so. Other than that, I was able to get a burger last night at the fire hall. They had their burger fundraiser and they did 197 burgers or meals or whatnot. And I thought they did a great job and I, I'm really glad they're doing those community events because I, I think that's so important to continue to have an opportunity to prove to see our department and be exposed to them and stuff, so. Any questions anybody has?
Credit cards?
Oh, credit cards, sure. Separate issue, in with the changes today, the governor's mask ordinance. Staff is looking at ways to support interactions in a safe way. And one of those ways would potentially adding a credit card apparatus. Would not take the place of our current payment system. We have a special situation with the utility payments through our website where we don't have any fees associated. This is more for permits and things like that when someone would come in. You'll note and remember that the police department had instituted a program, I think back in late May, early June. And they're using, you know, they call it square, which in a way is relatively simple to, you know, institute, it's simple training. I don't know, Josh, if you've got any feedback on that, if you've seen any problems with that or not.
No problems.
No problems. You know, the nice part about that is also that the, the, the user is the one paying the fees associated, so the city's not outing the money. And, you know, obviously it's an option. You know, if somebody doesn't want to have to pay that 1% fee or whatever it is, you know, we are accepting checks and things like that too. The reason we're looking at this now is that obviously it's been a problem long-term. More and more people are using credit cards. But also the fact that the fewer people that we have to have the face-to-face interaction with, the safer our, our employees and also residents can be. And we don't want to have to shut city hall down again. You know, our, our goal is to try and keep it open. And like I said, in and with the governor's guidance, we feel like there's might be a way to eliminate some of those possibly unnecessary interactions. I don't know. Linda and Nancy, do you have anything else you wanted to highlight that, with that?
No, just that we'd like approval to go ahead if we go ahead and try and institute it. And just a clarification, the customers do not pay the fees for utility bills the city has. But as Tim mentioned, we've got a special rate and that's why we have to use a different system for anything else. This is strictly for utility bills, where we get this really great deal on credit card fees, otherwise a ton more. So, but, but it might be finally the direction to go in. Some have been asking for a long time, but because of the complication and not using it as much. But technology's gotten a lot better too, so.
Yeah. Would, would you be able to use part of that CARES money to...
That's a, that's a COVID-related.
Institute that. That's really something we can take over. You know, if you have to buy equipment or training or...
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like it's been pretty, a pretty simple setup. So we'll look into it though, and if there are additional fees, we might, you know, like I say, we're, we're not paying the fees related to it. You know, as I understand, it's all web-based, so there isn't even any equipment. Like Kathy is paying for equipment for her credit card swipe and whatnot. So we're thinking about a good suggestion, thank you.
That's a good point. Maybe we should check with the bookstore and see if there'd be a way to cross-say those for that, if they would switch systems too.
Yes, we can check.
I mean, she's paying a lot of fees. Might be something to think about.
Yeah, but they've got a swipe there compared to us in terms, you know, they might want to do it a little...
Anyway, we can make it easier for staff.
But a good point, yes.
Especially because we're square, you can get two different types of readers. You can get a straight swipe and you can get a chip reader.
Right.
They make both. They make both, and it's ridiculous.
Simple, yeah. Well, that's one of the reasons we're looking at it, seems like it might be the easiest way just to get in place quickly without too many problems, so.
So I'd undertake a motion to.
I'll make a motion to authorize the exploration of.
Getting one or getting one?
For the getting of one.
I have a second?
Could you restate that?
Sure.
I can't. I will make a motion to authorize the getting of credit card equipment as discussed for City Hall and also the top of the register.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Engineers report, traffic volume on 16th Street Northeast, there's a report here.
Yeah, so our, our, as I said, our engineer is out of the office today, but I did want to highlight, this is something that, did you forward this on to me? I don't know, I know that the.
The sheriff's office has a device that you can put on a pole, it's a radar device that measures speed and a number of vehicles, so that to study what the average speed was.
And you can see that, so right now, the, the speed on that is set at 45 miles an hour, and typically, folks are going, you know, probably close to, I don't know, 65% of folks are going between 55 and 65 miles an hour. So, and based off of my understanding of it, the, the utilization with driveways and the distance between those would allow the, the city council to, to change that speed on up there. And so I think that something that, that looks like, you know, setting it 55 would probably not be a, a real negative thing, most people are going that speed already. So that's something that certainly.
The only, the only thing is, is you will get, if you set it at 55, you're going to have the majority of them going.
Faster.
Faster, yeah.
Well, I mean, I'm actually agreeing with that, but.
What would be your input you'd have on that?
From a law perspective, when we saw it posted as 45, we thought that was pretty low. We talked to the engineer about it, and part of it, of keeping it low is, yeah, most people go slower, we probably would enforce the 45 rule.
Yeah, I think you'd have a hard time legally, because they could probably go to court and make their, I mean, yeah.
This study is, if you had a DOT do a study, then I think you're legally required to change whatever the recommendations are, but this is just our own state.
Formal, okay.
Yeah.
So 55, what would be the other question from your perspective as far as?
No one.
Okay.
And then you'd be able to enforce it when they go over?
And I understand where Mr. Edgar's coming from, where that neighborhood, once they, they go from 55, and that'll be a, drops to a 30, and we already see mostly people are going 45 to 50 through that neighborhood too. They're well past the public works building for their, because the signs flash it. And then long-term, if there's development out there, 545 would be more appropriate.
So I mean, this would be something we could certainly take action on at a future meeting, but.
I would say look at where, where would you go from 55 to 35, or you can move it back up the hill, or wherever, is that where it makes sense to? Personally, I, if you're down at that county road, I don't see why you can't go 55 on the first mile of it, or get on and have a.
Yeah, and I think you can get a, you know, a 30 mile an hour warning well in advance of cresting that hill.
There was a reason they put it there, and I don't remember why, we'd have to check into that, either with the engineer or the police department, because it was moved in close to the city, and I don't know, because it was city limits, and you couldn't put it farther out. There was a reason when it was initially, because that was discussed then, and I don't remember the exact.
Well, we'll have, I'll have more information from Brandon, but.
Just for clarification, this is only on 16th Street, right?
That's correct.
The speed, because the title includes 260th Avenue.
That's where it was at, it was on the inter, inter, intersection.
Intersection, yeah, but it's, I mean, it's deceived, you know, by the, the title.
Thanks for the information, I guess I would look forward to come back with a recommendation.
Yeah.
What to do and where, and then we can kick that around, that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. We are now going to close the session to have an update on litigation, on the property litigation with the HISA litigation, and then another property dispute with Blaine's potential litigation, neither one will be recorded, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so neither one will be recorded, we'll reopen the meeting after those are done. And if you decide to take off and go home, have a great night, thanks for coming. Oh, can you get one out of the way? David's own chair, everybody make sure you flip your microphones up away from him.
Did you set that, did you turn the light?
I turned it.
Okay.